Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the ISD 191 Burnsville Eagles School Board. Today is September 10th, 2020, and the time is 6:30. And I'd like to start this our, you know, first meeting of September, the first day of school, and I'd like to give a special welcome to our new student representative, Mikome Adesu. Welcome, Mikome. And I'd also like to thank our audience for joining us. Incredible day, incredible times, and we know that everyone's busy. So, thank you for being with us. With that, Director Courier, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will start by approving tonight's agenda. I'll take a motion to approve. Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Schatz.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Courier.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Starting with the information portion of our meeting tonight, I would like to invite Dave Lake, Director of Operations, to join us. We are receiving a report about summer projects. Welcome, Dave.
Board Chair, Directors, and Superintendent Battle, welcome. Let's take some time to look at the FY 2020 Summer Projects. Slide, please. Bob Pate Stadium at Burnsville High School. We had a 12-year-old artificial turf surface that was worn well beyond its use. We were concerned about safety as we move forward. Artificial turf contains rubber pellets as well as fibers. What happens over time is the rubber pellets begin to displace as the fibers shorten, creating long-term safety concern if we didn't replace it in the near future. So, we went ahead and decided to replace it. We went with a product called Iron Turf. It's used with many professional clubs throughout the United States. As a matter of fact, the New England Patriots' practice field uses that as well as some of the soccer clubs in the United States. So, it is a top-of-the-line surface that should give us a nice lifelong span. We're expecting 10 to 15 years of usage out of it. If you can, as you look into this picture here, you'll see at the bottom of the screen, we did re-stripe the running track as well. You can see the beautiful Burnsville lettering there at the bottom. Slide, please. Along with that, we were able to replace the football goalposts. We've got the curved Minnesota Viking-type goalposts there. We have a new soccer goal system. It's a tuck-under soccer goals where you can slide it underneath. It's easier, safer to transport, to move about, less damaging to the turf surface. So, we'll have a longer usage out of it, easier use. It looks beautiful and fits the new goalpost system as well. We did have the opportunity on the northwest corner of the property to replace a flagpole that was starting to lean to one side. Hopefully, no one noticed, but we certainly did with operations. So, we took that opportunity to replace the flagpole. We added illumination to it so we can proudly display the flag 24 hours a day. We did some electrical updates as well, added electrical outlets in safe locations around the playing surface so then we can utilize technology for both our sports teams' activities as well as our physical education classes. So, I think we'll get multi-usage out of that, and the users will surely enjoy that update. Slide, please. At Harriet Bishop, oh, I'm sorry, Burnsville High School, moving to the east side of the property, Center Point Energy conducted a, from one end of our property to the other, gas line update. They replaced two lines underneath our property. They started underneath Highway 13, came through our football practice fields, through our east lot, in between our tennis courts, out through the varsity baseball field, and farther north into Burnsville. So, it was quite the undertaking. The picture there, I tried to do it justice. The enormous two-foot-wide pipes, hundreds of feet of pipe were put under our property. And from what Center Point Energy is telling us, we'll never have to do this again. It should last, they said, up to 100 years. So, we're finishing that restoration of the property right now. We're just left with the area in between the tennis courts as well as the baseball field, and we'll have that done later in the fall, and it'll be, baseball will be ready to go in the spring when they're scheduled to start up. Moving inside of Burnsville High School, we were able to update the Maraz Center lighting to LED. We previously had inefficient high-temperature sodium lighting, which had been there for decades. They were expensive to replace, much shorter lifespan with the bulbs. So, we were happy to move to LED. It's a much brighter, clearer area. I think that our artists and performers in that area, as well as our visitors, will really enjoy the update and notice it. Any visitor, I think, will notice it right as they walk in. It's a really pleasing display for us. Slide, please. So, moving to Harriet Bishop Elementary, we did the two minutes reconstruction on most of the parking lot, both on the upper, in the front of the building, and around back. We were able to regrade some of our, that land 30 years ago was swamp area. So, we were able to regrade some of that to get a better runoff. As you can see from the pictures, it turned out wonderful. We updated the lettering, the drive-through drop-off lane for orderly, safe busing, and parents driving through that area. We also, it's not in the picture, but we were able to update the loading dock, the cement apron, as you approach that area each year. The, as we got into the winter months, the ice would cause it to heave, so it would raise up a good foot and then come back down as the, as the ice melted away underneath the surface. So, we were able to regrade that, re-rock the entire area, and we look forward to not having that issue in the future. At Harriet Bishop, we also added a new dishwasher. It was nearly 25 years old, due for an update. We are able to update our hot water heater to a lower temperature system, which will run much more efficiently. And we added a booster heater and a nice energy-efficient water savings model there. Slide, please. At Eagle Ridge, we also did the same with the dishwasher. It's the same model that we put in at Harriet Bishop. It's a good shot of it there. I think our staff will be happy to use the new equipment. I think it'll make their jobs easier and easier transition as well. The carpeting, if you haven't seen it, you should check it out. We had 1996 original carpeting at Eagle Ridge, and it was due for replacement. We have top-of-the-line carpet tiles that are replaceable. Along with that, they're also stain-resistant. The picture doesn't do it justice. If you haven't been there, please stop by. The place looks beautiful. It looks like brand-new at Eagle Ridge. So, we're really happy with how that turned out. Slide, please. At William Byrne Elementary, and you'll see it in another school coming up, with the school closings, we had to adjust to the needs of our special education students. So, we found that at a couple sites, we needed to add ADA-compliant restrooms to meet the needs of our students. So, we chose two sites. The first here is William Byrne Elementary. The first picture to your left is on the outside of the bathroom. There's a washing area, a drinking fountain, some covered space. Moving into the bathroom, everything is ADA-compliant, of course. This is an elementary school, so you'll see the toilet very close to the floor. Both the sink, the toilet, the mirror, everything is ADA-compliant for our special needs students in an elementary setting. You can't see it in the picture, but there's quite a bit of storage area, one walls, wall-to-wall cabinetry for the supplies that staff needs. And then, you also can't see it in the picture, but there's a changing table there for staff and for a student to use. Slide, please. So, at Nicollet, here's another picture. We're in a middle school setting now, so you'll notice the fixtures are a little bit higher. Again, age-appropriate, ADA-compliant. Again, to service the needs of our students, we felt that we needed to add an ADA restroom over at Nicollet Middle School with the closing of Metcalf Middle School directly outside the bathroom. This is near the link, right in where the center meets the link, or the circle building meets the link there. We've got an ADA-compliant bottle-fill station along with a new drinking fountain. So, I think that the students and staff will be happy for that. We went through, we had many outdated marker boards and old blackboards. We replaced them with whiteboards, and staff are very pleased with that. Slide, please. At Nicollet Middle School, we did more maintenance projects there. First thing, I don't have the picture of it, but we have three 50-year-old boilers. They extend from one length of the room to the other. We were able to remove one of those boilers, and we added two high-efficiency benchmark boilers, which will save us in energy costs, quicker heating times, just better temperatures in our building. We're really excited to utilize that, especially myself as a boiler operator. I'm thrilled with that, and I know our maintenance staff is as well. The picture on the bottom left, it's our cooling side. We did some updates on, there's two chillers there as a part of our cooling system. We updated and overhauled them last year. This year, we added replay VFD, variable speed drive, which will provide much better, more energy-efficient cooling. And keep in mind that Nicollet heats and cools Sky Oaks Elementary as well. So, we'll be reaping energy savings at two different sites. Along with that, I didn't have the space to put it in, but in the main, the main entry outside of Nicollet Middle School, we did many sidewalk repairs. We took care of and any trip hazards and concerns that we had. So, we've got a safer entry point to our school. We did some along both sides of the building, too, the dock, and then the area between Sky Oaks and Nicollet. So, every year, we're looking at our sidewalks to see where we have any safety concerns, and we had a couple trip hazards there, borderline trip hazards, where we patched them up over the winter, and we were happy to get that solved. As you drive into Nicollet Middle School, there is a sidewalk apron. We replaced that as well. That was per the recommendation of the city as it was degrading over time, and so we were happy to take care of that at the same time. Slide, please. And that is it. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Dave. I'll open it up for board members' questions and comments. Any questions? Oh, Director Schatz.
Thanks for that report. That was, I did not realize, I saw how lovely the new football field looked, but I did not appreciate it fully without the side-to-side view of the previous picture of what it used to look like. So, I'm excited to see our teams and our marching band and everybody else out using the field and the track. So, and I appreciate the safety, you know, concept of, and the necessity for that, for that track and field replacement. So, thanks for that, keeping on top of that, and for all the rest of the projects that keep us humming along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Schatz. Director Miller.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate the report. It was very thorough. This is sort of what you definitely call a leading question statement, but just for the listening public, be clear, because you sound like pretty large-scale, expensive projects. This is part of our ongoing maintenance budget, correct, and planned, was planned for this year a long time ago, and it's all part of the, it's in a budget-type environment. So, I just want people to understand this is how we run a district. We do things like this on a regular basis to keep things updated, so we don't have hidden costs that pop up, correct?
Correct. This is part of our 10-year, long-term facility maintenance. We, every year, we're updating it, and we go 10 years out. Every project that I presented tonight is a part of the LTFM long-term facility maintenance, with the exception of the two ADA-compliant bathrooms where we did receive federal funding for that. That was approved by the board as well. But yes, we, all of these projects are planned out well in advance based on need.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No. I just had to, just really appreciate all of the attention that you and your team give our facilities and just keep them looking so, so beautiful and really welcoming for our students and families. The, now, I've heard families talk about, you mentioned the boiler and the chilling system at Nicollet. So, does that mean that students can expect more regulated temperatures in that building?
Yeah, yeah, especially on the cooling side. It's easier to regulate, and that's, that was the, we were having some failures on the speed drive that powers that system. And so, we updated it to an energy-efficient variable speed. And what that means is it can, much like what your home will do, it'll ramp up or slow down based on need, whereas before, to oversimplify it, it kind of ran wide open, not as efficient as we would like, but it was just the technology of the, of the time. But for sure, it'll provide better heating and cooling for our staff and students.
And in both buildings? Is that expectation, does that expectation hold true?
Correct. Absolutely, both buildings.
Thank you. And just going back in terms of the beautiful carpeting that you had mentioned at Eagle Ridge, is that, are we tending to be consistent with our carpet selections across the district in terms of the carpet squares when they need to be replaced?
Yes. Yeah. So, it's a similar functionality to what we have at Burnsville High School. There are squares, so if, you know, if somebody breaks a pen open or drops a cup of coffee, and we can't clean it out, we're able to pull that square, replace it, and just have a seamless, seamless transition there.
That's great. It's a great solution. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work this summer and for bringing this wonderful report to us. Thanks very much, Dave.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, we'll be hearing from Dr. Battle and receiving a report on the first day of school. Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Alt, and members of the board. Today was the first day of school, and it was unlike any in my history as an educator, and this will be a little different from the typical first day of school report. So, typically, I can show, superintendents usually show a lot of pictures of students getting off buses, teachers and staff welcoming students to school with hugs and high fives, and parents waving goodbye to their children at school or at bus stops. Those scenes did not happen today. However, that did not stop our parents from celebrating a new school year, or teachers from connecting with their students. So, here are a handful of photos that our staff and families have shared with us. This one, Trent and Alicia, thank you so much. And Burnsville High School, Eni Nov, and Virtual Learning Starbucks, Eagle Ridge, and then our new principal, Mrs. Buchanan, for her first day of kindergarten assessment time. And here's our fourth-grade team, one of them eager to get the school year started, of course, what we're all familiar with, the little Zoom pictures. So, thank you to everyone who submitted those pictures. So, I don't have a lot of numbers to share with you today, but we did have 5,533 students log in to their devices today to connect with their schools in one way or another. And I have a bit of a snapshot from across the district. So, high school held class meetings, and students participated in breakout sessions such as the required digital citizenship portion. We're almost at 90% of high school students' schedules being completed. Most were sent last night. The staff will continue to work on needed changes. Virtual Academy report, they had a great day at Virtual Academy, with teachers reporting excellent attendance in most classes with reports of 100% attendance. They spent time building relationships, and everyone loved the live virtual sessions. There was a power outage from Lakeville to Northfield this morning, which did impact a few teachers, but we know our teachers. They know how to respond quickly using their cellphones, and then they went to a building to reconnect the classes. So, thank you for that quick adaptation, as so many of us have learned during this time. The tech department, by 11:00 a.m. this morning, the team was working over 400 tickets from students, parents, and staff. This does not include the calls and emails, and I checked right before the board meeting. I think they were down to 275. So, they are still working. So, thank you for your patience. Otherwise, across the elementary and middle schools, it was a good day. There were some small technical hiccups at one site with Zoom, and then another at all technical issues with our technology. So, I am continually impressed by our staff. They have put in a tremendous amount of work, learning new skills, and reimagining the way they work together to deliver high-quality education. They are rising to meet the challenge and keeping the best interests of our students at the forefront. And some families are noticing, and they're sharing their support, even though we have had some things we still need to work on. So, for example, we did receive feedback about yesterday's good news that school meals would be given at no cost, at least for a limited amount of time, thanks to federal support. And one parent posted the following comment, "This is amazing. Thank you for everything you're doing for our kids. I can't imagine the pressure everyone is under. What an amazing gift to our families." So, sometimes the hardship or the negative comment sticks in our minds, and there's no doubt we still have work to do. But we can look to what we've accomplished to get to this point and be proud. And this concludes my 2020-21 first day of school report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Board members, comments or questions? Director Schatz.
Thank you, Teresa. That's, you know, it's first day of school, and it's exciting no matter what format that takes. So, thank you for that. I just want to clarify that the number of students that you said logged into their devices today, that's just the number of students that logged in. That's not the total enrollment that we have. That's just, for one reason or another, not everybody had to log in today, and, you know, things like that. So, I just want to make sure that our listening audience does not take that number as our total number of enrolled students. That's just how many had to log in today for their classes. So, thank you again, Teresa.
Thank, thank you.
Great point. Thank you, Director Schatz. Any other comments or questions? Director Miller.
Yes. Thank you again. I did have a question about the announcement of the Federal Food Services, just to clarification for myself and for the listening public. So, to be clear, all lunches are free of charge, correct?
Yes. And Lisa's going to help me with this, since we just received this guidance yesterday. Correct, Lisa?
Yes. So, we're going to be functioning under the summer food program, which up until a few days ago, we were, we were not, as the USDA has changed that most recently, and Minnesota Department of Education has now provided guidance that there is the option to continue that, particularly for schools that have been in the practice of doing it through the summer months. It did mean a retooling of our plan. It does mean that families, students ages 1 through 18 may receive meals free. We do still encourage families to complete the Educational Benefits Plan, as that generates revenue for other programs in the district-wide process.
Okay. So, I just, I mean, it's a pretty big deal. I mean, I obviously, I mean, I'm not, I know you're not understelling it, but it is a pretty big deal. Folks do not need to be putting money in their accounts. Well, it's not fee pay now, whatever we've transitioned to, at least for the time being. We're not going to be charging kids the days that they're in the school, when they go down to get their lunch, etc. Lisa, my, you know, the, over the summer, when we went to pick up the meals, we just drove up, were handed a bag and drove off, but there was no selection process. I'm going to be very selfish and ask a personal question, because my son tends to like, want to buy an extra milk or something like that. Do those options remain available? Is there a way they could be adding to the free items they're receiving?
So, with regard to the students in the schools, as they are in person, they will have the opportunity to do à la carte for milk and for bottled water. We do not have the ability for them to do a full meal in addition to the free meal that they're receiving, but the à la carte is limited to just the milk and the water at this time. Julie has prepared the opportunity with links for when we are able to provide more than just those two items as à la carte, but we want to get everything up and running. Our food service staff has been working throughout the summer months after last spring, and they continue to now work this fall. We do know that the summer food program is available to us until the money runs out or December 31st. So, there is a chance we'll have to move right on back to the National School Lunch Program come January.
So, that's why it's important for families to fill out the application for benefits.
Absolutely. Yes, because it's in their best interest to make sure that if they're eligible, that we know that, so that come January, there's no hiccup form.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, it's been a different first.
I just, sorry, I just had one other quick follow-up to Eric's question. So, Lisa, I think what I heard you say was, we'd have the lunches until December 31st or until the money runs out. Is there a possibility the money could run out before December 31st?
That's the big question. MDE is placed to the USDA, and they are not getting a definitive answer, so they're making sure they're being very clear about that with us, too.
So, today in MDE call with superintendents, they are watching what is happening in the Senate for the CARES funding. It may be embedded in there, and so they will be watching if there's another bill or package coming out of the federal government. So, they're hopeful.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. As always, an informative first-day report. Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. As always, an informative first day report. And next, let's see, oh, we're staying with Dr. Battle. We're going to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively. Dr. Battle.
Thank you. So I first want to start off again thanking you, the board, as well as staff for their work to prepare for and to launch this school year. As we all know, the pandemic is ever-changing and there are many moving parts. We have all, especially the board and staff, you have continued to change course based on new guidance. For example, what we just discussed about the change in our meal delivery. And I really want to thank students and parents for your patience and support. So as you recall, in the spring, we transformed our entire instructional and support system. We added childcare for healthcare workers and first responders and provided those meals. And we did this all in eight days. And so for this fall, we did have some lessons we learned from the spring. We piloted some of those in our summer session, especially the live scheduled time synchronous learning. But it was a timeline that really relied on a lot of flexibility on your part as well as staff. So June 15th and 16th, school leadership teams, principals and instructional staff spent two days in a retreat to review lessons learned from the spring distance learning and to begin to start planning for fall. June 18th is when Minnesota Department of Education and the Department of Health issued guidance to help districts plan. And if you all know, they did direct us to prepare for three learning models. And then July 30th is when the governor and commissioner Rickert gave us the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. It was a 111-page document. And it also had embedded links to several other guiding documents for food and nutrition, special education, updated health protocols for Minnesota Department of Health. They also unveiled that there will be a local decision about what learning model to start to follow with. And so we chose a staggered hybrid model. And they also asked us to look at some initial data based on the number of confirmed cases in the county. And they also said we should continue to provide care for those workers in critical sectors. August 3rd is when we presented our initial understanding and what we thought would be our plan. August 13th is when we actually, the board adopted that resolution. And August 27th, we provided an update. And then finally, we had the majority of our staff come back Monday, August 31st, our teachers. And so I just want to emphasize, in seven days, those staff brought us to today is first day of school. And so that's why I wanted to start off the report. So in seven days, the school staff that came back on Monday, August 31st, some of them were assigned to Virtual Academy. They didn't know we would have the need, but our parents had a choice and they really wanted to kind of take it slow for various reasons. They wanted, some wanted in person, some wanted just to have a full distance learning. So I think we're all under stress and we have to remember in the midst of a pandemic and we're each carrying different burdens because of it. Yet I have seen you, the board and staff, you're creative in your problem solving, you're flexible. I've seen all of you persevere in the midst of ambiguity. You have shared your talents, you shared your frustrations respectfully and professionally. And I do know at times it can seem overwhelming, but I know we will get through this together. So I want us to breathe, remain calm and to be kind to each other for this first day of school and the launch of the school year. So at the end of my remarks tonight, Bernie Bean, our licensed practical nurse, will share information regarding an updated Minnesota Department of Health decision tree for notification for suspected and confirmed cases of coronavirus and a home screening tool for parents and guardians. And so in the four main areas of our COVID response, health and safety, academic, student and family support operations and staff professional development, I'm going to give you an update since the last two weeks. So let's start with our baseline data, which is the number of confirmed cases in the two counties we serve, Dakota County and Scott County. So from August 9th to August 22nd, Dakota County was at 22.3 per 100,000 residents and Scott was 19.5. So this is the first report where we now have to switch from Scott to Dakota, because we have to use the numbers from the county that has the most cases. That still puts us in hybrid. And then today, 11:00 a.m., they released new county data. So Dakota County did increase 23.86 and Scott County decreased to 18.55. So Bernie Bean, Stephanie White and I, on Fridays, that's when we have our calls with the Public Health Dakota County. And then I also joined a call with Scott County. So I really don't have an analysis of the numbers until we talk to them. And so it still puts us in the hybrid. For the academic portion of the report, we have been completing those assessments in person and online. Administration is in place and teachers will use this data to inform instruction and identify any summer or the spring learning loss. You remember, we have not had an in-person since March 16th. And many of our staff have not even been in the building since then. They're first, so they'll be coming back, too. We're using FastBridge for K-8 and grades nine to 10 are using the ACT Aspire to indicate their readiness to meet those college entrance levels. We are going to carry over some funds through our federal Title VI funds for American Indian Education for COVID, and it's about $4,000. We did need to provide some additional curriculum materials for elementary, for the hybrid. For the Making Meaning, we needed extra Making Meaning, being a reader, being a writer and calendar math for about $75,000. Student and family support, the student Chromebook pickup for K-12 did take place Wednesday, September 2nd. We did have a glitch at one of the sites and so staff really wanted to apologize to those families and try to get those Chromebooks to them as quickly as possible. We also had on September 8th and 9th, virtual open houses. In activities, we have a very short season for Minnesota State High School League and we are part of the South Suburban Conference. So we have tennis girls, cross-country boys and girls, soccer boys and girls, swimming and diving girls. And I actually am going, it's very interesting, the swimming and diving, they're virtual meets. They're in their own home pools and they just take the times. So I'm going to join in, they sent me to Zoom League so I can see how this happens. So they don't come together, they're in two separate pools. And then they start them at the same time and then they track. I think that's how it is. So I'll let you do it next update. So there's a lot of adaptation going on. So the shortened season started August, the end of August, and it'll go through the second week of October. Operations, we all know what PPE is now, Personal Protective Equipment. They have been delivered to all the sites and are being distributed. And then our enrollment, so as of 9/8, K-12, thank you Director Shatz for making this distinction. So here is our enrollment. As of 9/8, K-12 is 7,714. Virtual Academy was 2,835. Early childhood special education, 67, excuse me, ages three to five, 67 in school and 66 in distance learning, Virtual Academy. And 73 in birth to three. And BPK has 247 with 103 of those students in the Virtual Academy. Food service plans, we shared that update, very happy. Want to talk about another from, support from the state of Minnesota, saliva test. So employees have been offered by the state of Minnesota to all school personnel that they received a code to request a home kit that will be sent to them. The test will be submitted through the employee's insurance for the state to be reimbursed. These will be claims against our self-insured plan for our covered employees. We did request 100 more codes and today Stephanie White sent out, we received from the state, the 100 additional codes for our employees. So they should be looking for that. I mentioned earlier about the issue at one of the schools. So, but the Chromebook distribution went well on Wednesday, the 2nd. For opening week, workshop week, the 31st, we really focused on all staff getting the health and safety new protocols. Even here at DEC, all staff here, I participated and ours presentation was delivered by Bernie Bean. All the other school nurses delivered that information to the site. Other learning sessions from last week were on the technology tools, Virtual Academy, since it is a new offering, distance learning, social-emotional learning and building relationships and connections. As I mentioned on, I think it was August 13th, the board passed the resolution that did allow me to make changes among the learning models. So right now, I'm not changing our learning model, but I do have a change to the in-person for grade nine for next week. So as you all know, health and safety is the priority. And based on recommendation from staff, I do believe that the high school needs a little bit more time to practice those very important health and safety protocols. So for the Burnsville High School ninth graders, the first week will only include one day of in-person learning. The high school will send out information beginning tonight. In order to ensure safety routines are practicing in place, ninth grade Burnsville High School students participating in the hybrid model will only attend one day of in-person learning during the week of September 14th. This is a change from two days. So Cohort A will attend in-person on Tuesday, September 15th. And Cohort B ninth graders will attend in-person on Thursday, September 17th. All other days, students will participate in distance learning. This change does not affect Virtual Academy students or any students in grades 10 to 12. They will continue with distance learning throughout the week. Burnsville High School will continue with the Safe Return to School Plan after that, with 12th graders joining ninth graders for the hybrid starting September 21st and all grades starting hybrid on September 28th. If we do continue to see those counting numbers, keeping us in the hybrid range and that we are considering the other factors of staffing because bus drivers, we need to make sure we can transport students. And so we are back on plan for all grades starting hybrid on September 28th. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bernie Bean, our lead licensed practical nurse, who will share information about MDH's updated decision tree. It is a little different from what first presentation we gave you. And then we are about to launch the home screening tool. Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Board Chair Alt and members of the board. I'm going to just briefly go over the decision tree with you and also talk to you a little bit about our home self-monitoring program that rolled out actually tonight on social media. If you, Erin, if you want to put up the decision tree, this is not a new document, it is provided, but it looks differently. Actually, it's the third revision of the decision tree. As science changes, as we learn more about COVID, our decision tree changes also. One of the big things that they clearly pointed out in this decision tree is on the very top of the header. It says people in schools, youth, childcare programs. So that includes all staff, all essential visitors, all students that attend our building. This is the decision tree that we use. Other disciplines have entities, businesses have different decision trees, but this is the one that we use in the school. When we're in a hybrid model, it's a requirement that we follow the decision tree. During the summer, I was the, if you want to say, the Triage Center for All Illnesses for Staff, our camps, our students. And I would follow the decision tree and work with MDH or a local public health to make sure that we're doing the correct guide, we're guiding families correctly on the decision tree. It can look pretty easy to follow, but as we know, every situation is pretty unique. And it is a complicated tool when you're first looking at it. But that's what the nurses are there for. We now, every building nurse has been trained by MDH on this decision tree. And so they are the Triage Center for COVID illness in their buildings. So it makes it a little more streamlined for them. Some of the big changes on this document is with the data of positive cases, they looked at the symptoms. And they now have divided the symptoms in most common and least common. Most common means that in the majority of positive cases, these symptoms were present. The least common are those symptoms like the sore throat, the congestion, that we know can be many different symptoms, many different illnesses. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through that, the algorithm. But it does give us guidance as to how we advise students and staff whether they're healthy enough to be in school or not. I, it can be complicated. And I would encourage families, staff to reach out to the health office because we need to partner together. We need to keep our buildings safe and healthy. And we are always going to be abundantly cautious and do the safest plan for our students and our staff. One program that we rolled out tonight is our home screening program. Now, that's not new for staff. That's the program we have always encouraged and required that they monitor for illness at home and not to come into our buildings if they are sick. That is, self-monitoring for illness is critical for all of us to wake up in the morning and take an inventory of how we are feeling. It's not only just for going to school, but it's when you go to the grocery store, when you go to a takeout drive-through restaurant. You, we really need to make that a part of our daily routine to keep our, where we go safe. So we are asking parents to partner with us on this program. We have given a lot of soft educational blasting of what this will look like with our summer programming, asking them to do the screening, giving them that tool in their hand to look at and to review. We have, on the social media, that tool is available to parents now. We will be giving a Sunday night blast to remember, don't forget to check for these symptoms. And I encourage families, make this a part of your daily routine with your child now. No different than brushing your teeth or eating breakfast. Get them used to making an inventory of how they are feeling. And if there's questions, call us. We will go through that decision tree with you and make sure that we're doing what we need to do to keep our students and our community safe. Yeah, it's a confusing document. I'm really happy to say that they have just translated it in Spanish and Somali. The, I'm really happy to say that they have just translated in, in Spanish and Somali. That came out today. And they will be doing that in other languages also. Yeah, so being back at school this week, there has been lots of emotions. Lots of emotions in the community. And so one of the MDH conferences I was in today, the epidemiology epidemiologist read this poem and I'd like to just share it with you because I really think it summarizes our journey, our worries. But how as a team, we, we can do this. It's by Stephanie Kraus. This school year is ideal for no one. Not for teachers, not for parents. Hybrid is not ideal. Virtual is not ideal. Face to face in the midst of a pandemic is not ideal. For every kid who is anxious to get back to the classroom. There is another who is anxious about returning. For every parent who wonders, how am I going to manage this? There is a student, a teacher, wondering, how am I going to manage this? Often a person wears both titles. For every kindergarten parent who is sad that this is how their child will begin their education. There's a parent of a senior who is bummed that this is how their child will end theirs. For every person angry about their child having to wear a mask. There is a person who is petrified. Their immune compromised family member will get sick. Life has thrown us a huge curve ball, a plot twist. It will not be easy. We will be challenged. We will get frustrated. I hope we rise to the occasion. I hope we help one another. We will all need help. I hope we treat each other with grace. We will all need grace. I hope we realize that at the end of the day, our kids need us to be the light. Set the tone, see the good. Take a really unfortunate situation and do our best to make it okay for them. I would change one sentence in this poem. Instead of saying, I hope we will rise to the occasion. I know District one ninety one has risen to this occasion. And health and safety will guide what we do and we will get through this together. Thank you.
Dr. Battle, you're, you're muted.
Thank you, Bernie. And so we really want to encourage families to call your school nurse. That decision tree is very complicated. It will be updated again. And so Bernie, just confirm on our website, we have a link, a link directly to MDH, so it's always the latest.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so it may change and you know, because as we learn more information, Minnesota Department of Health will update it. And that concludes the COVID nineteen report.
Great, thank you very much. I will open it up for questions, board members. All right, Director Chester.
Thank you, Cheryl. This is a, not related to COVID, but just because we're also attuned to our enrollment. I know that, Dr. Battle, you let us know what the enrollment was today. Or as of today, that, do we have any, do we know in comparison to last year, what are differences?
Yes, we do. I'm going to ask Executive Director of Human Resources Stacy Sobin. He's done that comparison. So looking at the kindergarten enrollment, we were, I think the last report, we were down some kindergartners. I think we did enroll some more and so Stacy can share some more details.
Just, just to clarify, you were asking how our kindergarten enrollment looks compared to last year at this time?
It was overall the general enrollment. And I just go to kindergartners, the last two weeks, we were a little concerned we hadn't had the same number of kindergartners from last year.
Yeah, we're, we're down kindergarten, just a little over fifty students from where we were last year. In some ways that is almost expected. We're seeing that trend across the country. For when families are deciding whether to have their first experience of school. If they have the option of delaying one more year, you know, I had a birthday over the summer. I, I think we'll hold the, the child back for one year before we start. We're seeing that trend pretty much across the country. Our budgeted number that we were looking at was seventy six oh six for end of year enrollment for kindergarten through twelfth grade. Right now we're at seventy seven fourteen, right there around that area. Typically after spring semester, we lose anywhere between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty students. High school students that are either graduating out or, or, or dropping. So it's going to be really, really close to our projected end of year numbers is, is where we are. Maybe a little bit, a little bit south of it at the moment.
Thank you, Stacy. Board members, any other questions or comments? Well, I would like to thank you, Dr. Battle, for again, another very thorough report. Keeping everyone up to date on where we are and, and where the uncertainty remains. I also wanted to thank Bernie Bean for the poem that was, that was really lovely and, and just the takeaway, set the tone. And see the good, that just, that kind of stuck with me. So thank you very much. Next, we will receive first student representative report of the year from Makume Adesu. Makume, welcome.
Hello, my name is Makume Adesu. I am currently a senior at Burnsville High School. And I am this year's school board student representative. For this first meeting, I would like to say how excited I am to take on this role. Dr. Battle, Mr. Helkey and I have already started this year's off strong with a meeting with me and my fellow peers. We voiced our concerns and our wishes for this year. We were able to discuss about health regulations, class schedules, low income family issues, help meals for students and so much more. This gave me the opportunity to see just how much impactful my role as student board rep already was. I'm excited to see how this will draw out and what will come of this unconventional year. And hopefully we'll graduate alongside my great friends. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate. Already knowing that you're, that you're already busy. Thank you. Next, we'll turn to Dr. Battle with the superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Chair Alt and members of the board. Tonight, you have heard about a very different first day of school and about how we are responding. Continuing our response to COVID nineteen pandemic. So for my personal report, I want to focus on something that may have gotten lost in the shuffle. So despite all the challenges and uncertainty, this last six months, we still have students who achieved. So Megan Hazy, a twenty twenty Burnsville High School graduate and one of six students in our emergency medical technician course. Became the first student in this year's program to pass the National Emergency Medical Technician Exam. The ENT program at Burnsville High School is a wonderful example of our pathways approach. It's collaborative, it's a collaboration with Inver Hills Community College and the Burnsville Fire Department. It gives students real life experience and leads to accreditation and puts students on their pathway to success. Megan has shared with our communication teams that the pathways model helped her find the classes she needed to pursue her interests in healthcare. And she ended up taking both the ENT course and the Certified Nursing Assistant Course. And we all know how important our healthcare workers are and we just really need these great young people to enter in the field. So I want to congratulate Megan on her accomplishment and give specific thanks to Anne Werner Dempsey, who teaches those courses. And has been instrumental in building our healthcare pathway options for students. And also I really want to thank our Burnsville Fire Chief BJ Youngman for his partnership and mentoring of our students. Megan is by no means the only Burnsville High School student taking full advantage of the opportunities at Burnsville High School. But this first is exciting to see, especially because I know it's the first of many. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Board members. Are there reports from board members? Director Carrier.
Yes, Chair Alt and Superintendent Battle, I have a report from basically nine seventeen. Jill Lewis was our chair for several years at nine seventeen. And was challenged by pancreatic cancer and had passed away in early June. And the family is having her memorial service this Saturday and I'll be representing our board. And it's going to be a drive through memorial service. So at an elementary school in Inver Grove Heights. So I just wanted to share with the board, I'll represent us at that event. And she was just a remarkable and accomplished person. So, and she did a fabulous job in sharing, chairing the nine seventeen board. So I'll be doing that on Saturday for us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Carrier. We, we appreciate you representing us this weekend. Any other board member reports? Okay, seeing none. I do have one. Giving a report on the board meeting model during COVID nineteen. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we are planning to move to a hybrid format for our board meetings. Starting with the September twenty fourth regular board meeting. In a hybrid meeting format, the first meeting of the month would continue to be virtual. While the second meeting of the month would be hybrid with some or all board members attending the meeting in person. During in person meetings, strict social distancing will apply. Accommodations will be made for board members who wish to attend remotely as allowed under state statute thirteen D dot O two one. In all cases, all board meetings will remain open to the public through online broadcast. And this concludes my report. Next, we'll turn to business portion of our meeting. And the consent agenda, although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Are there any items that board members which wish to separate? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve. Shots and seconded by Director Chester. Ms. Kenny, would you please do the roll call? I.
Chester.
I.
Carrier.
I.
Hume.
I.
Miller.
I.
I.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Stacy Silva, Executive Director of Human Resources, to join us. We are being asked to approve seasonal casual and temporary employee rates for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Welcome back, Stacy.
Thank you, Cheryl. Last spring, March sixth, I believe it was, we approved the casual wage scale going into twenty twenty one. Since then, a couple of different things have changed that we need to update this. One, we have a teacher's agreement now in place. At the time where we passed this, we didn't have an approved bargaining agreement. So you'll see a couple of lines that were addressing overloads are no longer relevant. We process out because they are part of the master agreement with BEA. Also, we're adding to other areas that came up since March sixth. We are adding a COVID Minnesota Department of Health Liaison. This is a, we're hoping a limited stipend for one year. But it will also be covered under our COVID relief funds that we have to spend for the, the spin through December. And this is quite frankly, for all of the additional work that Bernie and the leadership that she has provided to the district. So she will be named the coordinator for, for that. Emily from our athletic director was also requesting tennis site supervisor of stipend, stipend, a rate for supervision. We have that in a number of our other sports, but we didn't have one for tennis, so this will also assist him. So with that, I'm making the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the following rates to pay for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one school year, according to the casual wage scale.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Carrier, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Chester.
I.
Carrier.
I.
Hume.
I.
Miller.
I.
Shots.
I.
Alt.
I. And the motion carries. Next, we'll stay with Stacy. We're being asked to approve the memorandum of understanding between Independent School District one ninety one and the Burnsville Education Association.
This is kind of just a matter of course. With our hybrid model and the different components, the logistics that we have going on. One of the ways in which we're able to make this work is by doing an early transition for students from onsite to distance learning at the end of the day. And to do that, it helps with our transportation, it helps with our building cleaning. It will assist us with allowing a uniform teacher prep and conference time all at the end of the day. As well as for principals and administrators and building leadership teams to evaluate how did today go? Did anything come up that we weren't expecting? Did anything come up that we need to address and communicate with parents? It just will allow a little bit of extra time as well for each building to evaluate. Are we doing everything as safely as we possibly can? And, and make sure that we're adjusting on the fly as we need to. By doing the earlier transition, it has the, the, could have an impact. Possibly as far as interpretation that we are shortening our student instructional day, which would impact our student, our student teacher, our teacher's contract, which says that prep must be during the student contact or the instructional day. So working with BEA, we came to the agreement that yes, we both, both parties understand that the instructional day truly has not been shortened. It's transitioning that the uniformed prep time at the end of the day still falls within the contract language. Therefore, we don't have any, anything to grieve, there's no grievances with this. So the, the MOU really is just making sure that both parties are in agreement and understanding this model is not in violation of the contract and that the student instructional day is the same, quite frankly, as far as the length as it was last year. So with that, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Burnsville Education Association and Independent School District one ninety one.
Thank you, Stacy. I'll take a motion to approve. Moved by Director Miller, seconded by Director Hume. Questions or discussion? Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Stacy. In these times, we appreciate the flexibility and the partnership between our staff and the BEA and maintaining high expectations for learning for our students, so thank you. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Carrier.
I.
Hume.
I.
Miller.
I.
Shots.
I.
Alt.
I.
Chester.
I.
And the motion carries. Uh, finally, we will shift to, back to Dr. Battle. We are being asked to approve a birth to age eight joint powers agreement.
Thank you again, Chair Alt and members of the board. At the August 27th board meeting, I presented a report about the birth to age eight initiative that is bringing together key constituencies from public health, human services, community nonprofits, and education in Dakota County. Um, the goal of this birth to eight initiative is to ensure that children reach key developmental milestones. And so tonight, I bring the birth to eight, age eight joint powers agreement, and my recommendation is that the Board of Education approves this agreement um, between the County of Dakota and District 191 for the birth to eight program services.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Uh, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Shots, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Questions or comments? Director Carrier, was that your hand up?
Yes. Just for, just for clarity, this comes up, we have students that live in Scott County, and this is a Dakota County initiative. Could Superintendent Battle explain? Will this, will this affect our Scott County students? Oh, oh.
Thank.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Director Carrier. So this actually is a pilot program that has been approved by the legislature. So it was very specific for Dakota County. Um, I will get some more information to you about what Scott County does to ensure that those students have some of the key developmental milestones. And I'll make sure staff will give you what support we do provide for the Scott County. So it is specific for Dakota County.
Okay. It, it, yes, make sure that that's, that's clear because we bumped into that over time where students that go to our schools.
Yeah, it's interesting, embedded is if they're born in Dakota County. So you know how mobile we are among the counties. So I think that will serve, even though they may live in Scott now. Um, there is a provision in here if they're born in Dakota County. So we'll get clarification for you.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, Dr. Battle, I think all board members probably would appreciate receiving that same information. Okay, thank you. Director Chester.
Is it born in Dakota County and/or reside in Dakota County? Because I'm just.
There is a, there's a chart as described in Exhibit two. And so that's what I need to check on to make sure all of the criteria, because it is through legislation. And so we know how very specific it can be and the nuances that one or two words. So yes, I will get that information for the entire board. And if it, if they're not covered under this, then we will get the resources so families know Scott County, what we provide.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? No? All right, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Yum.
I.
Miller.
I.
Shots.
I.
Alt.
I.
Chester.
I.
Carrier.
I.
And the motion carries, thank you. Uh, that being our final agenda item, I would like to thank everyone for joining us. Board members, thank you for, for your work this week, and I will declare us adjourned. Have a lovely evening, everyone.